...that will notice that this meeting has been provided to specify the act proper notice of its call. Meeting was provided on the notice of April 28, 2010. Notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices mailed to the Nutley Towne Store alleging North Jersey Herald news and Nutley Drone. Mailed to the Nutley Township clerk advertising Nutley Sun on May 6, 2010 and posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please rise for reply to the vote.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as we are a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call it all.
Mr. Kupka?
Here.
Mrs. Zinski?
Here.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Sodda?
Here.
Mrs. Sizada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. McFone?
Here.
Two minutes. Our motion. So move. Mr. Kuzinski? Roll.
Mr. Cookdom? Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes, except for September 13th.
Hold on, don't you hear?
No, I'm not here, Charlie.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Correspondents?
Mr. Dunham.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Everyone now, I believe, is familiar with Family Day. Today's Family Day in Nutley and there are many activities arranged through the municipality and the corporation, the school board, and your participating faculty. Headlights. Mrs. Russo gave me a very good suggestion two weeks ago. Frankly, I thought I had a little bit of time to implement it, but anytime we have a case of headlights in the district, we will let all schools know. It's not just combined to a school or grade, but perhaps extra activities, recreation, athletics, scouts, that there are children from one school playing or working or practicing with another school. So we will get that out to reason. I'm out of time because I've already had two boys with headlights in one elementary school. We're already getting that up on our website. I've given Mr. Sizada, the Chair of the Policy Committee, a concussion guideline for student athletes to review before we bring that into line with our policy book. We're working with the Office of Emergency Management in the time of a crisis hurricane or any natural disaster. Our schools were used for shelters and used as a facility for first responders, so we're working to bring that plan together. The open houses went very, very, very well, well attended, and I attended the superintendent's roundtable on the 24th with the county superintendent. Nothing pressing was presented. Looking ahead, tomorrow we have a Finance Committee meeting on the 29th. It's the third yet club of Nutley annual state fundraiser. On the 30th, we are meeting with officials from Korea, with student teachers from Korea who worked with our schools for the last several years. The long reception for new teachers, every board member should have received that invitation. Articulation Day will be on the 18th of October, and on the 20th, we will have tours of our schools to highlight and showcase some of the gentleness. That's what I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we move to the Secretary's report, I just wanted to introduce our new high school representative, the Student Council President, Mrs. Yann Kofon. Welcome to your first seat.
Thank you.
Before we follow the Board Secretary's. Ms. Yann?
Everything is moving along on schedule in the business office, and the auditors will be coming in the week of October 12th to complete audit for the 2009-2010 school.
Ms. Kofon?
This summer, we had a few car washes and early school year fundraisers. Our primary event is our homecoming event, which is starting off with this week is our School Spirit Week. Today was Sports Apparel Day, tomorrow is Hat Day, Wednesday is Neon Day, Thursday is Halloween Day, and Friday is Maroon and Gray Day. Friday night, we are having a bonfire at Floor 11 at 7:30, and all the fall sport teams are going to be announced there. We have an alumni breakfast at 9:30 at the high school for the graduating class of 50, 60, 65, and 80. Then to follow that is a homecoming parade, which will begin at 11 o'clock, and following that one is a tailgating and pig roast in the teacher's parking lot. We will be having halftime festivities, which is crowning our homecoming court, and we have a post-game reception, which everybody is welcome to join us in the senior courtyard with light freshmen. During the tailgating party, we're going to set up two alumni tents that will be to gather information from the alumnis to keep them important activities going on at the high school. Homecoming so far has been our most occupying event of the year, but the senior classes are just getting ready for their senior cruise, which is October 15th, and we are starting prep work for our fashion show, which is scheduled to be February 5th. Also, other classes have been getting involved in small fundraisers such as par sales and gym bag sales, and the Student Council Key Club were used as guides and information people during the open house. And recently, we just elected the Class of 2014 officers. That was President Tori Reyes, Vice President Patrick Delacy, Secretary Callie Demato, and Treasurer Caitlin.
Can we have a homecoming king and queen?
No, we find out during halftime, yes.
During halftime?
Yeah.
I wait during the sensitivity.
Yeah.
Any committee reports?
You up for it again this year, Ted?
Hearing there's an outside chance. Thank you for your confidence. Anyway, Mr. Sizada? Anyone? Any reports?
Uh, no, Mr. Riley.
You want on this side? Okay, and during that, I will give a construction committee report since construction continues and it's rapidly coming to a close. Obviously, Washington Elementary School is the first school to be completed. Window replacement punch list has been completed. Masonry restoration punch list work from CVM is completed. Items such as seating, landscaping, sidewalk repairs, electrical boxes are being scheduled and coordinated at this time. Yanacol School, where the majority of the work is going on right now, roof replacement work is substantially complete with only the relocation of the roof hatch remaining. Window replacement is ongoing, off-hours at this time. Masonry restoration work is substantially complete. CVM has issued their punch list, and this work is underway on weekends. Board reviewed with help construction, the damaged sidewalks, curbs, payment locations, and landscaping accordingly, and they will be corrected next. HVAC replacement, all unit ventilators and exhaust units in the classrooms are installed. Case work has been completed in the basement classrooms. Case work for the first floor will be completed today, should be completed by today. Is that completed today? Case work for the second floor is scheduled to be completed by Wednesday, October 6th. Cabinet heater installation will commence at night on Monday, September 27th. That's tonight. Boiler room will be completed except for the boiler breaching by Friday, October 1st. Startup of the boilers and pumps is scheduled for the first week of October 2010. Obviously, it's a critical deadline for us since we need to have heat by the 15th of October. Lincoln School window replacement work punch list to be prepared. Roof replacement continued during off-hours for the vestibule roof and roof drainage construction. I think that's on the East Side of the building, right, Phil? So that work is continuing. Masonry restoration work and punch list has been completed. Lincoln School and Washington School just looked incredible. Rackliff Elementary School, window replacement punch list is completed. HVAC replacement, all available equipment installed, not changing to field conditions and pipe. Case work installation has been completed. Fin tube radiation units, I have no idea what they are, but I'm talking about them, for changes have been ordered. Nine locations where cabinet heater cannot fix existing openings, I understand what that is. Boiler room work has continued on the off-hours. Boiler room startup is scheduled for the first week of October, and that's on schedule. The high school. The roof replacement of the tile roof is complete, the gutter lining remains at this time. Flat roof replacement works has continued on off-hours. The HVAC replacement and electrical upgrade goes as follows. The gas piping on the roof is continued. Rooftop duct work installation has been completed. Electrical work continues for the new generator, transfer switch, and corresponding conduit and wiring. Public service is proceeding with the second roof service. Spring Garden, where the majority of the work was done this summer. Masonry restoration work is substantially complete. Punch list issued by CVM is being addressed at this time by help. Metal panel installation at the baseboard windows has performed, one window remains. We continue to do some touch-up painting for the impartmented work throughout. Landscaping has commenced around the entire school, and we thank our collegiate landscaping for basically making that perimeter look just phenomenal for almost for three pictures. We tip our cap collectively to Mr. Collegio for his donations, time, materials, and manpower. Miscellaneous electrical unit work continues as issues are noted by the interior contractors. HVAC startup of the RTUs and AHU is underway. Cabinet heater installation is scheduled for the week of September 27th, that's this week. Spiezle, the architect, is scheduled to perform their punch list throughout, walkthrough, I'm sorry, September 28th tomorrow. Boiler room startup is scheduled to be performed at night during the week of September 27th this week. Issues noted on the temporary CO are being addressed by all contractors. So we still continue to do work throughout in off-hours, not conflicting with any staff or any students or any classroom interruptions. So we thank the contractors for their cooperation. At this time, at this time of the meeting is when I normally apologize for not having a closed executive session on the agenda, so I will do that again, I promise, for the final time. But this, this closed executive session, I promise you, will end no later than 7:00 PM, and if it goes past 7:00 PM, we're going to shut it down and go back at the end of the meeting. So we do not want to put you guys out, we're trying to accommodate these meetings. So at this time, where is Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJS A10 total 12. Now therefore, be resolved with Board of Education recess, the closed executive session at this time will discuss personnel and legal issues. Be it further resolved with the results of these discussions, will be made public fine conclusions, we agenda subsequent meeting, Board of Education, when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Let's move a second. We're in closed, black session.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
He's here.
Mr. Mascheratola?
He can't hear you.
He can't hear you.
Mr. Mascheratola?
He's present. As he likes. Here. I'm here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Sodda?
Here.
Sizada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here. Okay, hearing you citizens. This is the first hearing. We now come to the course of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the Board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations, allow 20 minutes for this communication. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after authors wishing to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the Chair, and no one may address Board members individually. Please be reminded that if a statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please step to the microphone if you wish to speak about agenda. I don't know. I knew you got dressed for a reason.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, I knew you got dressed for a reason.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, you.
Mr. Mascheratola, please. Mike Russo, 11 D Street. I have a question on the transfer schedule, specifically our appendix, the, it looks like we're taking away about roughly $2,100 from the textbook line. Another parent from St. Mary Church yesterday brought to my attention that his daughter doesn't have enough books in one of her classes. He said he had an oceanography class at the high school. I guess my general question is, do we have enough books for all of our classrooms?
I can answer that. No principal has contacted me or an assistant or a VP on any shortages. Certainly, we'll look into the oceanography, but nobody has called or emailed requesting additional copies of any book.
We just listened to what the teacher told, that it's not my child. What the teacher told the students is, he does not have enough books for two classes. He has two classes of oceanography, so the kids can't get a textbook, so they're required to do their homework.
He certainly requires to be accurate in that statement. Anyone else?
Alan Thomas, 108 Kimbey Street, we are the President. My question, excuse me, on Board Secretary Resolution, I believe it's probably number one, has to do with the fund analysis.
Any questions?
What is the Enterprise Fund?
Which document are you referring to? Are you referring to the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Food service, athletic camps that are run during the summer, and the extended day program are all considered and discussed.
On the, and the special revenue funds?
That's all the federal, federal programs such as IDPA, no child left behind.
Mr. President, on the special revenue, we have here end of the month fund reports for any June, July, and August, if you go around town. Each of them indicates a substantial accounts receivable on the intergovernmental side of things, from the federal government, for the amount of $616,000. I'm just curious as to why such an obvious evil appears all three months? Are the feds trying to stiff us on something, or should I be writing my congressman?
Not at all. The way we receive the money for the federal funds is that we have to expend the money first and then submit for reimbursement.
And we have done that?
And we do that every single month for whatever expenditures we have each month, we file for reimbursement on a monthly basis. So the first reimbursement we could receive for the current school year would not occur until, we would have to file in September. We probably wouldn't file that until October, actually, because we can't spend that money until September. So we file in October and receive the money in November.
I see, and this is, I mean, again, this is on June 30th, there's $616,000. July 30th, $600,000. Is this money from last, spent last year that they owe us money for?
The June would be last year's money, and it includes the money that they still owe us for because we can continue to submit for the reimbursements as we are expending the money, and some of that money carry, unexpendable money carries over into the following year for those federal grants.
It's just exactly.
It doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of, a lot of sense.
I just want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do to get the federal money, and they're stiffing us, and I want to know that, too.
We make sure to stay on top of those reimbursements.
I have other questions, President, but there's somebody else.
Hi, Dave Scheidel, 72 Breslau. Just two quick questions. One, I want to know if there was a backup plan if the heat wasn't ready in the school?
That, that's a question for later on. This portion is for the agenda items only. Possible construction on the agenda, that's, that may be under the name.
My second question might be the same thing, which is, we talked about the cabinetry being complete in the school's one-day act.
That's a question for later as well. Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Thomas?
My question is regarding the pre-crew trip list. There's a couple of trips to St. John's Church in Door. Can I find out what those are about?
Soup kitchen.
Oh, okay.
Right on Route 21 in Door. That's your heading towards the cap.
Okay.
Right hand side. Anyone else wish to be here? Your Board closes.
Mr. President, more questions on the Senate documents.
Yes, sir.
On the Enterprise Fund, depending on June 30th, it's a $116,000 account receivable under the heading other. And I just wondered what the Enterprise Fund will be, $116,000 other receivable.
Let the Board Secretary answer that question for you.
Do you know what Pedro's going to ask for?
The page numbers seem that I numbered, but I have the sheet here by name, Mr. President.
Certainly.
My concern about this, Mr. President, was that the end of this year, June 30th, would be a $100,000 receivable for a Enterprise Fund. It's somewhat curious.
I'd like to be able to send you more detailed information and send you an email, but the premises of tonight's meeting, more than likely, that is the money that is due back to us from chart wells, from the profits of the food service.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we close this portion. Mr. Kuzinski, would you please move Superintendent's Resolution. Number 16 is listed.
I salute Superintendent's Resolutions, number 1, number 16. This is, number 2.
Second, Mr. Mascheratola. Discussion? Seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Sizada, would you please move Superintendent's Resolution, 17 and 17A is listed, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I think it was Superintendent's Resolution, 17 and 17A as written.
Second, Mrs. Russo, any discussion? Seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Reed, would you please move Superintendent's Resolution, 18 is listed, please.
Mr. President, I believe Superintendent's Resolution, number 18, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Rogers, could you please move number 19, Superintendent's Resolution, please. Superintendent's Resolution, number 19, as written. Second. Second, Mr. Mascheratola, discussion? Seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Sodda, could you move number 20, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to remove Superintendent's Resolution, number 40.
Second. Second, Mr. Kuzinski? Discussion? Please call roll.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Kupka, would you please move, Assistant Administrator Board Secretary's Resolution, number 1 through number 28.
Yes, Mr. President. I move Assistant Administrator Board Secretary's Resolution, number 123, as written.
Second. Second, Mrs. Russo, any discussion on the issues?
One, one point. Yes, Mr. Rogers. President. Number 11, segments of donation. I'd like to thank the Redwood School PTO for their 8,000 pound donation to small boys. Not only does Rackliff do this, but every single PTO throughout this district has been very instrumental in providing materials such as this. Thank you. Who we know that I concurrently do a spectacular job in all these PTOs, and we thank them for every time they pass our way for the kids. Any other discussion?
This is VA Resolution 1 through 24.
Yes. 122. 22. 23 is an addendum, 24 is. Please call it all.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, I'm all but communication bills, and if I just may have a little latitude with this, Mr. President.
Call, please.
I think we really have to start looking at the cable vision bills, the light pad bills, the AT&amp;T bills, the cell phone bills. I would ask that we really look at this and see if there's a way, because we've been talking about this, where we can find a more cost-effective way in dealing with this. We're looking at bills at $22,000 a month, $30,000 for this, $50,000 for that. So I would ask that, Mr. President, because I know the VA is very busy, maybe if we can get a committee together down the road to assist her to really take a good look at this. Well, we are actually, Mr. Sizada and I are, that's part of our joint services that we're trying to forge, will be commissioners. Mr. Mascheratola, as you know, is working on a grant which will help us eliminate the T1 lines and the Wi-Fi throughout the district, which will save the municipality a lot of money. And along those same lines, I would expect that our phone system would be together as well. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Kupka. Did you have a question?
Yes, I think the Finance Committee is planning to do some operational analysis review, and in fact, on our agenda for next meeting, there is something on telecommunications in there, so we'll expand to make sure we cover this.
Sure. Let's make sure we don't do double the work, double the work on the PA and spell. Any other questions? Call it all.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Kupka, would you please move VA Resolutions 23 and 24 as listed, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move VA Resolutions, number 23 and 24, as written.
Second, Mr. Kuzinski? Discussion? Please call it all.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions and comments on all school-related items. Regulations allow 30 minutes for this communication. Any person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to stay within this requirement. And as I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me.
Very clear, 45 minutes of grace, spokesperson for Nutley County, I've seen that bar.
Very clear, point five hundred place, spokesperson for another parent at C Network. Uh, tonight, I have a parent that's coming to let him in. Um, I had met Mrs. Slawski, she will introduce herself. But, um, I met her in May and she has a story that she would like to share with you and I have some ideas that I would also like to share so that we hopefully not go down the same route that we experienced before. My name is Mrs. Slawski, I'm at Nineteen Kingsley Avenue. And I went to Terry in May following an incident at Spring Garden Elementary School involving my son, who at the time was in fourth grade. Uh, it was lunchtime, they were on the playground and playing kickball. My son tripped, he fell, he broke his arm. And he lay there for a while screaming and I think in the confusion, the kids didn't know how to respond and there was no one around. Um, eventually, one of the kids ran to get a lunch aid. The lunch aid approached my son and my son was crying and he said, "I need to go to the nurse, I broke my arm." She wouldn't believe him. And he cried to her, he said, "Please, you don't understand, I know I broke my arm, I heard it snap." She said, "That wasn't your arm that snapped, you felt on a stick and the stick snapped." He goes, "No, you have to see my arm, I can't stand it, I have to go to the nurse." Finally, she led him walk to the nurse unattended, but told him when he left, "If you didn't break your arm, I'm gonna break it for you." My son went to the nurse, again, unattended, screaming. The principal heard him coming into school and knew something was wrong because of the cry and because of the scream. An ambulance was called, he was taken to emergency at Mountain Side Hospital and seven hours later, he had surgery. Uh, I did have a conversation and a very good conversation with the principal and I had a lot of concerns about the way that the lunch aid handled my son. The following day, two of the children that were present, I worked with their parents, and they had both called me at work because the kids went home and told their parents what took place on the playground, almost rebate them to what my son told me and they were so upset because of the way she spoke to my son and because she wouldn't attend to him and she wouldn't let him go to the nurse. She didn't believe him. To say that I was livid at the way he was treated would be an understatement, which is why I called Terry because I didn't quite know how to handle it from there. My concern is, I don't know what kind of training, if any, they have or what sort of responsibility they have for the children once they're on the playground. I don't know what the process is in case of an emergency. Um, he should not have had to go unattended to the nurse's office, someone should have been brought to him. So I just need some information and education for me to know what should I have expected.
Well, we'll certainly look into that matter and investigate. Please call over.
Yes, sir. I just...
I know we... You communicated with the principal on this, didn't you?
Mrs. Slawski. I did, I did, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to bring Mrs. Slawski here basically because not of this particular incident, but there have been other problems that I've heard come out at other schools as well. And my question here is twofold. I understand that the teachers at that time have their lunch and they're certainly entitled to that. And I know that the principals, it's my understanding that the principals are in charge of that area at that time. Um, also, like Mrs. Slawski said, it's interesting to see... It's hard to understand this type of situation at this time because it's so many kids. It's really, it's really hard pressed to see what could have been done at that point. But my question is too, like Mrs. Slawski, is what type of training that they have? Like what kind of training can they get so that they know how to identify situations like this? I mean, I'll be honest with you, I have complaints about a particular elementary school on that side of town where lunch aids scream at the children every day, every day. And I don't understand why that's happening. And my question is, would it be possible for them to receive some training? I mean, you have a behaviorist on staff. Would it be, would it be possible for them to get that training from the behaviorists so that they can learn some strategies on how not to be screaming? Because twofold, things that happen at such a... Kids take things in differently. Some kids, when they hear the screaming, they just don't even listen and they move on to what they have to do. And other kids are so frightened by the yelling and the screaming that they don't know what to do. But I have to say to myself as an educator, listen, if I'm screaming at kids, then I've already lost it at that point. Then the kids, I've already lost my, my train of thought. So I'm just wondering if there's a possibility during the articulation day, if you could, you know, consider training for them so that they are told, "Look, when you're in a really difficult situation, this is what you do. When you're dealing with a kid who's mouthing off to you, this is what you do." And setting up, you know, protocol to speak, so...
So really, your question is, what kind, two question. What kind of, what kind of training do the aides go through, if any, number one?
Right.
And number two, what could we do?
Right, to make it better.
To make, to make things better.
Yes.
Mrs. Zara?
Exactly, we can certainly put a very quick component into the articulation, it was coming up, it's the first step.
Good.
And then certainly review this specific situation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else, thank you. Anyone else? Any school-related comments, please?
Eighty-nine seventy-two, press with the same question I asked before, is there was a backup plan for, um, if the boys aren't ready?
There is a backup plan and, but we're on schedule, there's no interruption, everything, it's just about ready to go within days. But we've been through this before with, if you remember, Washington School and Lincoln School and this school as well, so we're ready to go.
The other question was, you were saying the cabinetry or whatever was complete? I noticed in the school, the other night, um, back to school night, in all the classrooms, there's like, uh, safety, that's it.
About the backsplash now or the cabinets itself? The backsplash is not completed, the cabinet should complete, the backsplash will be completed, I hope. Phil, any other?
They're working, the carpenters are working the middle of the cabinetry and they're going back.
They don't go back, they give backsplash.
So it's like this metal covering, that I guess, or something?
Check this.
So a little piece of aluminum.
Aluminum, okay.
Window sill right now.
Gotcha. Good question, all right, just a second.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Russell, that'd be three. Um, at one of the board meetings earlier this summer, a few of the board members brought up the subject of school uniforms. They asked for a survey to be done. I know it was at least two, maybe three or four board members asked for a survey. Whatever happened, did that...
Well, with a few, well, that same night, I asked anyone who wanted to move that forward to bring me any kind of documentation on the benefit of school uniforms since... The only thing I, I, did I finish? The only thing that I had downloaded when I first investigated this four years ago, when I first Googled school uniforms, I downloaded the first nineteen reports, which showed me...
I read all nineteen, by the way.
That there were no benefit at all to school uniforms in the way of increased test scores or less violence or anything like that. So back then, I said, "If there's no benefit, why would we do it?" And that an urban district, in my opinion, was really developed and designed and so far in the state of New Jersey, ninety-nine percent of every district that has it is an urban district. And they have issues with colors and gangs and stuff like that that don't exist in nothing. Uh, to this day, I really haven't received anything from a board member reporting differently. If they want to present it to us, we can open up the dialogue again, but that's what we left it that night.
With all due respect, I also Google school uniforms. And for every nineteen articles that you'll find against school uniforms, you'll also find nineteen in favor.
Do you have them with you or?
I don't, no.
I'd love to see them.
I would, I would be willing to. The thing I want to point out, though, is you have to understand something. You're not gonna find prospective randomized, not blinded studies done, looking... Similar to what you'll see in the pharmaceutical business or I'm in the medical device business. We have a vested interest. When I sponsor a study, it costs hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a well-done study because we have a vested interest. We could make millions of dollars by spending a few hundred. You're not gonna see that with school uniforms. The school uniform companies are not gonna sponsor those clinical studies. Now, with all due respect, from what I've read about New Jersey, there are three entities that decide whether or not school uniforms are brought into a school system. Parents, principals, and teachers. A board member or the Board of Education does not get involved with making that decision. That's up to us. If we want, we as parents or as teachers or principals, if we want school uniforms, that's our right.
Well, didn't Mrs. Williams, I think we did that already, didn't we? Didn't we have that survey already? Didn't Mrs. Williams, a couple of years ago, put a survey?
I don't think that ever happened.
I thought she did.
Did that be four, three years ago?
Four, four, yeah.
Cause I've been on the board for over four.
I thought she did and I think at that time, it was not pro-uniform, so kind of...
Are you saying that a study went out to parents?
I believe it did. I believe it went out to...
I have four children.
Mr. Kaczynski will tell you, it was probably the year that I took off, but I believe the year that I took off, I'm sure that Patty Williams put out a survey.
And, and, there's, you can belabor it as long as you want to. I think under new business, this is gonna be discussed to get my son...
Sure, absolutely, you can absolutely do it. As a parent who just went back, went for back to school shopping for three daughters, I want three of those. I'm with you, I've done it five times, so I...
Yeah, I know how you're gonna welcome them.
Evening, Mr. President, Alan Thomas, one zero eight McKinley Street. Mr. President, at one of our meetings in August, I think it was the last public meeting in August, uh, the public was advised that the superintendent would present an evaluation of Nutley's score in the Jersey Monthly High School Annual Summit and that that would happen on this, at the September thirteenth meeting, which I'm sure the minutes will reflect, maybe not. And I was wondering if the public is going to have the benefit of a response from the district on Nutley High School and Plummeting's ranking on the New Jersey Block First Score Plan.
If you don't mind, I respectfully disagree with the use of the word plummeting.
You can, but I assume, Mr. President, we know how to count and one sixty is a plummet from one twenty.
Mr. Zara?
Yes, that report was prepared. I, if I recall correctly, on the thirteenth, there's several issues that came up. I certainly have it available for everyone, I will go, it was prepared by the high school principals who made... And I reviewed it and I will have it, uh, our next meeting is, what, fourteen? Fourth? The fourth, I'm sorry, fourth.
It's a regular, it's a regular report, Mr. President, may I ask that it be posted on the school's website?
Well, they are notes, but we can formalize it.
Any other questions?
It's twelve, I think it was thirteen or fourteen.
Sorry?
You can hold the meetings at thirteenth of October, so...
It's not the twelfth? Twelve, it's the twelfth. They have to close on the state.
Any other questions, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, I did want to ask during the other proceedings about the... Business Secretary's Resolution, number twenty-two, about the sale of the Ock Fleet nineteen ninety-eight Dodge Ram.
Yes, sir.
What took so long to get rid of this?
Good maintenance. Prevent maintenance plan, anticipation.
I hope we weren't driving kids around in that thing.
To maintenance, uh, vehicles, sir.
Finally, Mr. President, I just communicated with Mr. James about this. It has to do with the special meeting that the board has put out special notice for, for Wednesday evening. I guess, I wasn't clear with Mr. James, I thought the notice had a turn of the picture. One paragraph says the board will convene and go immediately into executive session, then reconvene and adjourn.
Correct. Meaning no action, you think?
Well, the next paragraph says formal action maybe, but...
We will have no formal action, I won't say that, I know. I mean, we prepared the new...
And hence, my problem, Mr. President, is the seemingly contradictory thing. As you know, I love coming to Board of Education meetings.
Without having.
Thank you, Mr. President. But I don't want to come and all you're going to do is go into executive session. The other hand, I don't want to miss anything. Certainly, without the public knows of what I'd be missing, I, you know, don't really want to show up and waste my time. And I'm sure the president...
It's, it's, it's our intention as a board to move as quickly as we can and as responsibly as we can a higher firm to research the power of the new superintendent for the district. As you all know, the superintendent will be leaving at the end of gym. And, uh, it's, it's my interpretation of what will happen on Wednesday is we'll bring in some groups of people. It's also my intention, my invention, I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, we'll talk about it later in new business or old business, because we've spoken about it before. At that time, we can talk about if we want to bring two people back again or three people back again or just one person back again. I, in my opinion, I think we'll probably be wanting to narrow the field at that time and maybe bring some people back.
Have our fees been issued for?
I'm sorry?
Have our fees been issued for a third time?
Uh, no.
Don't they have?
Have we?
A request for proposal went out.
Paul, sorry.
Okay.
My bad. Any other questions, Mr.?
No, that's all, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board.
Yes, sir.
Recently, a couple of newspaper articles caught my attention because they are linked by reason of unnecessary cost to taxpayers. In the first, Mr. Rogers discussed the important matter of bullying, the subject of increasing interest by the board and all of us over the past year and a half or so. The article states, of Mr. Rogers, in a quote, that he is proposing that the state put more responsibility on the parents. This would include parents of a bully paying a fee equal to that old equal fees overtime fee for staff and costs related to any necessary counseling. In the second, Mr. Zara referenced the recent reversal of Judge Kennedy's decision in the Tritech matter and said, quote, "I don't see this as a victory or a defeat, but as an added layer of litigation suggesting additional unnecessary legal costs." These lead me to ask, with respect to the board, how are decisions made to litigate certain matters of the district in terms of cost effectiveness? Does the administration make a recommendation to the Board of Education? Or does a board member or members make a recommendation to the administration? And at what point does legal counsel get involved and give advice as to the merit, risk, and potential cost of such litigation? Also, if you have any way of knowing, what is the district's success rate for such actions? And how much has the district saved or lost in recent years in actions that might be considered questionable? Finally, I agree with Mr. Rogers' suggestion to pursue reimbursement in these situations, but that you consider not only going after parents for unnecessary costs to the district, but also to district employees or representatives of the district who lie or misrepresent their activities or those of others, which likewise result in additional cost to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very clear, point five hundred first, spokesperson for another parent at C Network. Um, greetings. Um, Washington School is beautiful, first of all, thank you very, very much. Um, in regards to, Mr. Sodda had a comment, uh, I don't think he was last month's meeting about parent training. And I just wanted to say that that really is something that we all need. I know that there's certain parents that are, that don't do the best to their ability. It's just not good being parents and they do need help and maybe that's why their kids are the mess that they are. So if we can talk more about parent training perhaps and see how we could go down that road and I know that you all have a very strict budget, but if there's something that we could do, you know, um, in combination. And NPAN's actually having a workshop on October twenty-seventh about how to talk to your teenager or how to listen when your teen talks. It's just a first step on how to deal with that particular issue. So if we can, you know, talk more about that, that would be great. And in regards to the dress code, that tends to be something very sticky. Um, I just wanted to tell you about what happens in my district. We have what is known as, we don't have, um, uniforms. We have what is known as replacement parent, um, policy where if any, where if a student comes in, they're usually mostly adults because they tend to wear things that are inappropriate or too premissuous. If they do come in with premissuous clothing, they are sent down to the office where they are given a T-shirt, a very large one, that's not attractive at all. And they are told to wear the T-shirt the entire day. And at two-thirty, they must go to the bathroom, they must return the T-shirt back. And they are, it's recorded on computer or in a booklet. And if they continue with inappropriate wear, um, it gets worse. You wear the T-shirt and you're sent home, you get a zero, you could go to detention or wherever it is.
Do you think the same thing?
Do you do something like that?
We've spoken about that many times.
But my question is, has that made a difference for certain kids? Because I'll be honest with you, I...
If you allow me to allow it to, I'll hearken back to when this topic first came up. And the topic first came up four years, almost five years ago, where a board member sat right here, or maybe in the kitchen, and said, "We have problems with the dress code." And it was the policy chair at the time, he said, "We have a policy. If you, if you have a problem with dress code, by all means, speak to the chief administrator or then speak to the other administrators, names of the principals, and, and address the, the issue." I said, "But personally, I don't think it's as big an issue as we're discussing." And by the way, I would appreciate it if any board member who had an issue, please, by all means, go to the high school, call the superintendent, walk through the high school. And if you have issues, please, by all means, I want the first person you call when you're in that school is me and you tell me what you see if you have a problem. Mr. Zara, did anybody call me?
No. No.
So, I'm not saying that kids don't walk to school looking like maybe things are inappropriate, but I'm telling you, once they cross the threshold, the policy is enforced. But we don't see them. See, we, we drive by, and we walk by, we don't see them walking down Franklin Avenue, and we're astonished at times. And I agree, I'm astonished at times. But I trust my administration, and I trust my policy. And to this day, no board member has ever come to me and said, "Well, from that school, we saw a problem inside the school," whether it was middle school or the high school. So if we do, by all means, please call me, call the principal, call the administration, because that's what we're supposed to do as board members. We're not supposed to handle them personally.
No.
We're supposed to go to the superintendent, and he's supposed to address the, the layer below.
Well, like, I have had people come to me about this, and I've always said that ninety percent of the kids that walk into that building are fine. I mean, I've been, I've been the mom that drops off kids for the last ten years, so I know that they're fine. It's, it might be that ten percent that just likes to push the limit, and they exist everywhere. So, um, so you're saying when they walk through the door, they know how to adjust their clothing, so it's completely appropriate?
Um, no, what I'm telling you is if they do not adjust their clothing so it's appropriate, they are brought down to the office, and the principal hands them an oversized T-shirt, just like he does in this facility. Is that correct, Mr. Zarrah?
Yes.
Is it ugly? I just wanted, that's an important thing, it has to be.
It's way oversized, and it's not beautiful.
Good.
It's not a maroon and gray T-shirt, but the baseball insignia or the football insignia.
Or Hollister or anything like that.
It's rather bold and raisin color, and it draws attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else? As we just about wrap up this session.
Good question. Is this the last regularly scheduled meeting for that Mrs. Francios will be?
As we discuss that.
I'm just like a policy banker for everything she's done. I know you and I have had differences, but I think you did a wonderful job as principal and-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zarrah. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. Russo's full mouth on there.
Okay.
I just want to let Miss Francios know that on behalf of the Education Association, it's been a pleasure dealing with you. I found you always a very consummate professional, and no matter what subject we're discussing, if there's a problem, you always have the best interest of the children in heart. And I just want to acknowledge.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard before we close this section? Seeing none, let's move on to old business. Anyone wish to discuss some old business, whether it's school uniforms or anything else? Yes, Mr. Rogers?
It's his old business and his very old business. We just heard a little bit about school uniforms, so I'd like to open up for discussion tonight, right now, the issue of school uniforms. I'll start off by saying that I've heard over the past two years from parents, some teachers, and some administrators, the fact that school uniforms, and they're saying it's fact, and I'm not going to say it's fact because I haven't done the research here. With school uniforms, in this day and age of looking at our personal economies, would be very helpful to them with regard to finances. Buying school uniforms, according to some of the people I spoke to, would certainly help them financially. Another end of it, which we can't really quantify at this point, is that there is somewhat of a link between bullying and a lack of some uniformity in a school. Now, I'm going to do a little bit more research on that, but I can tell you, my personal experience has shown that there is some credence to that. You will have children make fun out of the children because so-and-so doesn't have designer jeans or designer sneakers. You'll have that go on. So, I would say at this point, Mr. President and fellow board members, that, you know, we've talked about this, and yes, I was here when there was a so-called survey that was not a survey, from what I understand. I think Mrs. Russo was here too, and Mr. Mascaratola. I don't believe there was a comprehensive type survey done, so I would ask this board and open it up for discussion that we do two things. One, we do create a survey and include all the stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our administrators, et cetera, in this survey. And second, we put a timeline on it. We have been talking about this for two years, and as time goes on, there's either misinformation continuing to flow, continuing to flow about the dress code policy being enforced, not being enforced. A lot, a lot, a lot of bad information going out, and no accurate information. So if we can put together a survey, a timeline, get it out to all the stakeholders, have them come to these board of ed meetings and discuss this with us, I think we could finally put this to rest.
Mr. Russo.
Mr. President, I'd like to add that, yes, there was a survey, the survey that was not a survey, but it was not to do with uniforms, it was to do with February break. I, as a parent, have never received a survey, questioning my opinion on uniforms or not.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Cooper?
Uh, yes, I mean, I agree with what Mr. Russo said about the parents having a major vote in what's going on in respect to whether, whether there's uniforms or not. They are the primary stakeholders in, in, in a very real sense. It's, you know, they're children, it's their, it's, it's their investment in them from a clothing point of view, it's, as Mr. Rogers says, you know, it may be some ties into bullying and the street at core. And so I totally agree that, you know, the parents should have a major say in, in our staff, administrative staff, and our teachers.
Mr. Zarrah? I think the term inappropriate dress is very subjective, and to, to make it objective is difficult, because how low is too low, how high is too high? And what happens then is it makes it difficult to enforce. Another problem is, I think, many of the staff, some of the staff members, especially the males, are reluctant to make comments about inappropriate dress of the young ladies because they'll be accused of ogling them. And so this makes it problematic and difficult to enforce. Anyone else?
I also agree with the, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Cooper, and Mr. Russo. But I'd like to see, if we're going to do a survey, it has to be done properly. There's got to be a way of reaching every parent, knowing that we did, you know, it has to be done in the proper way, otherwise we're just going to be on a time. And I'd like to actually second Steve's motion to, let's take a vote amongst board members if we want to go there.
Mr. President, could I just add one more thing? I think it's important. Were we talking about middle school and high school and not elementary school? Or are we talking about the entire district? I think we have to define that before we go forward. I, I would recommend middle school and high school.
I think the survey will include every-
Hold on a second. Mr. Reed, please, please let the chair fall on everybody so we can control it.
I think it's an issue that's definitely worthy of investigation, and I can see both sides where there are test studies in favor, we're going to find test studies against school uniforms. But I think part of this process regarding the survey is I think it would be incumbent upon us as elected officials to do our due diligence, to present the research, and perhaps perform, or at least do want to assign an ad hoc committee to further investigate this issue. I'd be more than happy to join that committee and to offer my perspective.
I don't, I don't think anyone has any issue with sending out a survey. I don't think anybody ever had an issue with sending out a survey. I'm just, I'm stating two facts. The first fact is, the last time we discussed, I'll get to you, Mr. Kuzinski, excuse me, the first fact is, it's not two years, but it's almost five years that we've been talking about this. And again, no one has ever come back to me after walking through the high school and said they had a problem. And number two, at the last meeting, we said, "You have a survey, by all means, show me." And I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Russo. The surveys that I looked at on the internet were all done by major universities. I mean, I, I would have to tell you, that had to be extensive dollars that went into these studies, because they were, they weren't done by, you know, a local community college. Major people were involved from major universities doing these studies, so. And as a matter of fact, I believe that, that night, I gave everything I had to, um...
Mrs. Graves?
No, I gave it to my other board member, Jerry Del Tufo. I gave my, my nineteen studies to Jerry Del Tufo, and I said, "Mr. Del Tufo, if you have anything that, that lies in the face of the first nineteen studies and surveys that I did, please, by all means, bring it to me." And that was five years, four years ago, I still don't have anything back. Yes, Mr. Kuzinski. And I'm not, I'm not saying, obviously, I'm against it. I've been against it since day one, it's against it now, I'm still against it now. I, I don't think that we have the same issues here that, that other districts have that have these uniforms, and I just stand by that. And certainly, kids don't want that shirt. Mr. Kuzinski?
Well, no, Jerry Del Tufo, I'm sure he has it in his archive someplace.
It's there, it's in.
I don't see the problem, as, as, as a new board member, having not been involved in it before, of setting up a committee and doing the research, looking at the internet, getting the, the feedback from the parents and so on, set up a committee so forward, wouldn't it?
I mean, as far as I'm concerned on this one, we're committed to mine. Anybody has anything, just by all means, bring it to us.
Well, someone got, someone got a formulated survey, and as Mrs. Russo alluded to, surveys in the past tend to drop off halfway through, you know, we don't get a complete feedback. Sometimes parents aren't reached, sometimes things aren't sent home properly. With the internet nowadays is probably a lot easier, but I, I think if we're going to pursue any type of survey from now on, it needs to be very thorough.
Well, I, I think, listen, there was a history here, there's a, there's a few districts close to us that have gone through the same process and proceed, whether it's a caucus or Bellwood or whoever it is. And I believe that they also did an intensive survey as well. And so many surveys are skewed, obviously, towards school uniforms, so we'd have to look at them in a strict mindset. But I, I'm sure you're probably coming up with a, for the survey, and got to a problem. I'm all for it. Yes, Mr. Zarrah?
Yeah, you mentioned that it's strictly by and large urban districts that have this, but I'd like to point out that a lot of the private schools in the area that are held in pretty high regard have school uniforms and have always had them, and that's something to consider too. So it's not just urban districts. I'm sure that St. Peters has them, I'm sure that, um, St. Joseph has them, that Oak and Hall has them.
Listen, I have, I went to St. Mary's and I just got them. I don't think, I don't think, my point is, they didn't make me a smarter, and it didn't, it didn't make the bullying any less-
He's still got this. You're an example. It made me a lot better.
Oh, my goodness. Obviously, that gift of yours.
Well, you're, that might always change.
Anyone else wish to be heard on, on this side?
I would think to, to make it beneficial, rather than have a committee of nine, I, I really think we need-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that initially, I think whatever anybody wants to generate unilaterally, bring to the next meeting in October, and we'll, we'll put it all together, we'll compile it, we'll look at it, and then we'll form a committee to sort of narrow it down and look at it and come out with the best case scenario.
You're going to include citizens and principals and teachers?
Well, initially, let's see what the nine, nine of us have to do, and then we can expand it to whatever committee we decide to expand.
I think certification will be included.
I don't have a problem, I just don't want to make it so cumbersome where it becomes a, you know.
What's our assignment then? Be clear?
Two, two things, you know, whatever you want to generate off the website, if it's program, you know, whatever you want to do as far as what, what your surveys and studies say, and whatever we can do to generate, whether it's on the internet or contacting other districts, or through the superintendent, contacting the districts that have gone through this process before, and, and take a look at the surveys and studies that they had, and then we'll take a look at it.
Well, Mr. Reed, just a comment, it is also a fact that a board member can bring up a, bring up a resolution and bring up a issue to be voted on amongst the board members.
Well, I think we just did.
But no, I understand, but I'm talking even as far as if we want to have uniforms in our school. I mean, we can do all our homework, and we can do all our work, but if somebody would like to bring something to a vote, I think it's every board member's right to bring up any fact that they like to.
I don't think that's fair. It's school uniforms, but with concern, if that's policy chair, maybe you can look into that for us.
I, I wouldn't want to make a decision like that without having input from-
I wouldn't either.
Sir?
Anyone else?
Moral business, Mr. President?
Sure. Mr. Zarrah, is if we extinguish that sort of timing? Thank you. I would ask that, Dr. Reed, since you're, you've been, we've been talking about this and abortion talk about this, can we look into a policy that will, and this is a question for all my colleagues, that will give the superintendent of schools the authority to approve or deny, on a case-by-case basis, early entry of gifted and talented students into our district? Here's my reasoning. We do have students, I think one in particular has been brought to our attention, as all of you know, but from time to time, you have very gifted students at an early age. They've gone through testing, they're, they're very bright, and they're great according to these tests, and some of the parents would like them to be given the opportunity to enter school at an earlier age. I think this, in this case, it was four years old, four and a half years old, they missed a five month or two. Now, I know there are studies, we could talk about studies until the cow goes over the moon, but the fact of the matter is, I've always believed that it should be the parents that make the decisions for their children, not any governing body. We have a very strict policy, and it's being adhered to. What I'm asking is that this board consider changing that policy based on recommendations by the policy committee when they look into this, to give the superintendent the authority, the leeway to waiver students who are bright and talented, they gifted, give them the opportunity to enter early. And if down the road it doesn't work out, will the parent make the decision, but not the governing body? That's how I would ask that to be considered. Anyone else? Moral business. New business, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Russo.
That's okay. Mr. President, I have two documents that my first grade son brought home from school the other day, that we got in his library class, which means twice a week. One day it's spent on libraries, skills, and the other day it's spent on computer skills. So I'm wondering if we can find out from the policy committee where we are with regards to removing the district mandated graduation requirement of students in ninth through twelfth grade having computer applications as a course.
I don't even think we've looked at, have we? Have you asked them to look at?
Well, I believe back in April, you said you were going to be doing that as part of the, um-
The overview for academic, academic, Mr. Zarrah, who was that, because you were involved in it?
This, this has come up several times over the years, and the concern, or the short answer is that many parents and many students feel that they have adequate computer skills, and the teachers, the professions are telling us that they really don't measure on it. For those people who have taken a staff-developed test to test out, students have not erred very well. Also, with the curriculum content standards, there are a certain amount of credits that students have to take in the fine, the foreign and, and technical arts. I'm not opposed to researching that. What I will tell you is if students test out, or if that course is waiting for them, they do have to take another course or two in that area. So they may not be able, they may not have to take that entry level, that first-year freshman course, but they would have to take something in that department to, to, to satisfy the curriculum content standards. So they will be taking some type of computer course, but certainly it could be an upper level, rather than an entry level. And that's coming from the state, not the-
Why don't we have, because it's not really policies, why don't we have the academic committee sit with the principal? And, and, and the superintendent, and then report back to the board on, on the findings as far as that is. Is that a fair?
But I will add that, and it is in fact a policy, it's not the board policy.
It is a policy, we've discussed this outline-
No, but I mean, I, I didn't say it wasn't a policy, I'm saying it's, you know, I think we really need to hear from the professionals. I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with, with making a policy decision before I hear from the professionals, and I'd like the academic committee, the superintendent, to sit down with the professionals and ask them what their opinion is, so we have something to go by, we just can't change the policy without hearing from the professionals. Is that what you're asking, Mr. Reed?
Absolutely.
Um, I, I believe we, I personally have spoken to professionals, I've spoken to teachers here in the district that used to give the course. What we were told was they weren't passing the course because of the keyboarding skills. And we've discussed this for over a year now, that, that keyboarding needs to be introduced at a much, much younger age than ninth through twelfth grade.
Well, is it being launched?
Well, it is being taught at the first grade level.
But I'm saying, really, it doesn't intensify the scope?
Yes, it does, but not every student with the electives, where there were the quarter year courses, is, is involved in that. So it's left up to the freshman year of high school, those students having a concentration. What we have done is roll that back to the four years we live here, and it's married up with the school, with finance course, personal finance course.
And that is a graduate, state graduation requirement. So by association, it's still a graduation requirement. When I, when I first asked why this is a district graduation requirement, and how many other courses are, you answered me with no. Was it the only district?
The others are state requirements.
Requirements.
Correct.
So that's why I, I want to know why it is the only one, and it's wreaking havoc on the children's schedules, having to take this. It's causing them to not be able to take those more advanced computer classes by tying up their schedule. We've just had a curriculum revision, and we see that they're teaching these skills much, much younger.
That's the good news.
That's a great, fantastic news. So that's, that's my question, why is this policy that it's the only district mandated graduation requirement, and how do we get rid of that?
Well, you know, you can get rid of it as, as the board, if the board wants to get rid of it, but, you know, again, I would, I would love to have the administrators here from the high school to discuss it from all board and give us their, their input, and I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Russo is our- I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Russo has already spoken on it. Personally, I haven't, you know, I'd love to get, take on the department chair and the principals, and take on it on the twelfth, on the meeting on the twelfth, if that's possible. Is that okay with you, Mrs. Russo?
Very good, thank you.
The, the academic and technology committee, we were trying to meet today, but we just ran out of time. If we can get together at the end of the spring and set up a meeting this week, just being on Monday, and then we can report back to you.
I was just going to say, the academic and technology committee, we had some preliminary discussions around this, and there are a number of issues surrounding it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to hear about.
It's a complicated thing, and, uh, we, we need, people need all the facts.
Hopefully, the administrators can provide us with the details we're looking for, and hopefully they'll take the decision, so she's looking for it. Mr. Scott, go.
Old business?
Yes?
I have old, I have old...
Are we done with this item? Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Scott?
I have old, no. Old business would be, we never received a list of litigation that's pending, not something that's futur, futuristic, a pa, a list of pending litigation from our construction firm on...
Construction attorney, construction, construction attorney, construction firm?
The, uh, the construction attorney.
Okay.
On a pending...
I don't think we have to get that from the construction attorney, I think that's something at the board secretary.
Well, I asked for that at two meetings ago. What I specifically asked for was this.
On custody statutes.
I'd like to see what the pending litigation is, and who we're litigation with, and how much it's cost us for each one.
Now, can I ask you a question? Didn't we discuss that on executive session?
No, we never got the answer.
An executive session?
Never got it. The second thing is, which probably would be for executive session, is what our plans are for futuristic litigation, that probably we would not be able to discuss in public at this time.
I, I thought we discussed all of those items in the...
Maybe broad brush, but no, nothing concrete, okay?
I thought we went...
Mm-hmm. I don't recall.
You can tell me to add again, and not an executive session.
All right, so then that's that. Now, the old, old business is, this is for the superintendent. Um, Mr. Superintendent, do we have a target date? A realistic target date for a table organization?
Mr. Vienmaester tells me that he has.
Who?
Mr. Vienmaester.
We don't have it.
Okay, well, we'll make sure.
I wouldn't, no, I want a target date, I want a firm date on when we are going to have it.
I would say the end of October, clear enough?
Can anyone else, Mr. Charlie, go? Anyone else on all business?
One, one more follow-up, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I yielded. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, since Mrs. Quirk resumated my subject about, uh, developing a program for parents so that they can more effectively help their children, I would like to ask the administration to come up with some kind of plan as to how this kind of thing might be implemented, and maybe even paid for, but something that we could look at and see if it's suitable, and possibly institute.
I would think that this might be something that the PTO should sponsor, the PT Council or something.
Well, I still think we need a plan, and, and I, I'd like to see some sort of tentative plan as to how this might be accomplished.
Did you work on that with the superintendent?
Would I? Of course I would.
Good.
No problem.
Sit down.
It's okay, yeah.
All right. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, uh, just follow-up on the textbook issue, I, I too have heard, again, last year there was a lack of history books, uh, there was a lack of, uh, science books, and I'm hearing this from parents and teachers, et cetera. And again, we have to get back, so I would ask, Mrs. Aron, can you provide us with that information, you're going to get it from the principals by the end of October?
Very simple, my plan tomorrow, we're looking at the question, the oceanography book, I will email every principal and every department chair tomorrow, and yes, to supply you a list of books, books that are, are inadequate in number and with the type as well.
And these, uh, I, I would not want to see us, you know, demand from our teachers that they do a job, whatever tools that they need in the force. Uh, students need books if they need books, so thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mrs. Russo?
I guess, I don't want to bring up a sore subject, but I do want, and, uh, like we talked, and then we discussed that stop, drop, and go. I just want to know, is, how did it end? What, what's the final, is that still being investigated? Is that being surveyed? Is that being, can you just give me an idea where we are with that?
Well, we actually met with the Rackliff School PTO at their PTO meeting, uh, two weeks ago, and there was a very nice turnout of the, uh, of the parents, and we had a very good exchange of ideas and philosophies and plans. And the parents, as well as others, in a perfect world, that stop, drop, and go would be on Chestnut Street. And I think everyone in the room agreed on that. The issue is, it's, it's not a one-way, you have parking on both sides, so right now, with the way logistically we're set up there, it's impossible to do a stop, drop, and go there. That's why, uh, the commissioner and his department initially had it in the back of the school. Um, so what we left off with at the end of that meeting, and as I said, by all means, please form a committee of four or five, uh, people from Rackliff School, and we'll go, we'll go to the commissioner and discuss an alternate plan, uh, to see if it's possible or feasible. And, you know, you're going to have to change, you know, the culture out there on that street if we do that, because you're going to have to shut down, it's not one side, both sides, uh, for parking, uh, you can't make it a one-way from what I understand, it would take, uh, you know, uh, the five commissioners coming together and agreeing to do something on that street, so I believe that, uh, we'll be going to the next commissioner's meeting, I'm not sure if that favors, but, uh, I believe at that time we'll go and, uh, discuss the possibility of, uh, feasibility of doing something on Chestnut Street, but there's, there's a lot of logistic issues to make that happen. But the issue is, the current plan that's been in place for as long as I've lived in this town is not a sustainable plan. We're not going to continue with people dropping their kids off on Bloomfield Avenue, crossing the street in the middle of Bloomfield Avenue, crossing the street on Chestnut Street, that we made perfectly clear. So we need to change something now. It's too dangerous. There's, there's cars with mirrors coming off of them because, you know, you have commercial vehicles flying down Bloomfield Avenue, uh, you have commercial vehicles, damaging vehicles, uh, on Chestnut Street, we've had documentation of some accidents, uh, out there, it's just not, I'm just going to say it one more time, what we have today is not sustainable. It's too dangerous, and you can't have kids and parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles crossing Bloomfield Avenue or Chestnut Street.
One comment that I'd like to make on that is that, one, um, if they are, I'd like to be part of it. If someone's going to start looking into traffic surveys and that, I would like to be part of it, if the board is going to take a role in this, that's number one. But number two, you make a comment about people crossing the streets, and I think we need to go to the commissioner of the police department and have them enforce jaywalking, because we do have traffic lights. Right? I know there's issues, if they would just walk to the corner and cross at the traffic light, life would be a lot safer. I mean, this isn't that hard of a, of a project if the parents would like to do the proper thing and walk to the corners and cross at the lights with a crossing guard there. There'd be nobody crossing the streets.
I, I think that they, they've been out, and, and I think that, you know, that's probably been brought up a million times, I'm not dismissing it, it's part of your statement, but, you know, as soon as, you know, a police officer will come and pull up, and everybody will walk to the corner, and then they drive away, and then they cross the middle of the street again. So, you know, that's, that's what's going on, that's been going on since, you know, I've been here.
Maybe his shared services with the police officer.
Well, that's why, that's why we're, it's a shared services program, I mean, that's, that's how this whole thing came to, uh, came to be in the first place.
Mr. President?
Anyone else?
Yes. On that, uh, in fact, uh, sorry, you reminded me, I received an email from a couple of residents on Chestnut Street, which I forwarded to the Public Safety Department, because this will be there immediately, but I'll make sure you all get a copy. There are concerns of residents on Chestnut Street.
Sure.
Uh, with regard to this, so all these shareholders are going to have to get behind this, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to come to a solution, but Mr. Rogers is right, the, the way it is now is not sustainable, uh, something has to be done, and, uh, hopefully we'll find a solution.
Thank you. Anyone else? New business, old business, anything?
New business.
Yes, Mr. Kuzin, new business.
New business.
Give them a way to pay you.
Yeah, well, it actually refers back a little bit to the old business, I, I was concerned about Mrs. Quirk's, um, the issue she brought up at Spring Garden, you know, I, I thought, I was under the impression that we had the school, A, in that playground during the lunchtime.
I, I believe the, the question is not whether there was supervision, but how it was addressed.
Supposedly, she had a fine against me, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they're going to address it. I, I really am concerned that that's the way it came down, as we all are, I'm sure, and I, I would hope I could get an answer, all board members would get an answer back on, on what happened and how we can fix it.
I would, I would have an answer back by Wednesday, when we meet Wednesday.
Got it. Um, the, something new, although I, I understand, and I don't want to take credit for it, or, this might have been brought up before, I think by Al Westano on, on the past board, and Mr. Spazaro made me aware of it now, the, the great landscaping job that Colicchio did at Spring Garden, um, it's a trend throughout the country now of, of people taking on little projects, you've seen him on the highway where the Rotary will, will sponsor a cutoff on a highway and will maintain that property. I, I would like to see us maybe form a committee of myself and one other person, and go out and look to see if we can find some landscapers that would be willing to donate their time to maintain our school lots.
With, of course, an advertising...
Yeah, I mean, of course, they're going to put a sign there that this is maintained by Charlie Kuzinski and, and blah, 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 and I'm not totally opposed to that, and, and, et cetera, I'd like to bring it forward to the board, but I, I would like to pursue the opportunity of, of maybe, uh, helping our district financially by sharing services, not only with the, with the commissioners that we're talking about, with some of our, um, landscapers in town, or painters, or whatever might be concerned, in this case, landscapers.
Yeah, I, I know that, uh, past president, Mr. Olivoe, researched this...
I know someone brought it up, I was sure.
But, you know, I'll, I'll reach out to him and ask him what the conclusion was, I don't remember exactly what happened, but it definitely was something to look at.
On that note, I'd just like to ask our attorney for the, the question on actually allowing someone to do that, you know, you get into the issue, I just, I would like to do it, but I'd like to find out what the legals are.
That's all part of it, yeah.
You know, the legals are, because, you know, who gets to do it, and how's it determined?
Right. I think that's, that was the issue.
It's needing of the legals.
If I may, when folks look into that landscaping, I'd just like to point out that the cost of that landscaping was shared by the contractors. That was the last weekend before school opening, and, and through Mr. Nicoletti arranged with the contractors to, uh, finance that, so, and it was a wonderful job, and I would love to see that at every school.
Okay, some of the new businesses also. I want my new businesses.
I want to have Mr. Maco answer your question.
Okay.
Well, uh, Mr. Spazaro, I do want to check it further, but it would seem to me there would be some issues regarding insurance coverage, first of all, in terms of them doing work on our property, usually required, the workers' compensation, liability insurance, and then I think the other situation would be, uh, depending on the cost, is it something that we have to go out, uh, and have someone bid on or something, but if you're talking about being donated, that's different.
You're talking about donation.
All right, well, no one can avoid that part. I think the insurance aspect, and then I would want to look at a liability aspect, and, uh, I would welcome getting involved in the legal end of that, if you should find someone willing to do that.
Anyone else on new business? Yes, Mr. Scott?
Um, something that's, the project that I've been interested in is, uh, the non-college ground student, and, uh, I'd like to make a, uh, motion suggestion today, if we can figure out how we can, um, there's a test called a vocational exploration survey test, I spoke to Mary Ann Frenchos before regarding this, uh, I don't know the exact form style, but let's see if it's something that we can get issued in our high school at a younger age, freshman sophomore year, to be able to identify our non-college ground students and who would be interested in getting into a, uh, a career-style, uh, education, you know, through a job. So I'm wondering if it's something that we could pursue to try to identify, so we can try to focus on the, uh...
I, I think I would love to have something to hand out to all board members and reference that before we put a motion on.
Well, I guess we could use a kind of a test, or I could ask for, Mr. Zar, to give some information on it.
Just to get a clarification, are we talking about, uh, surveying every student at, in a certain grade, or are we, um, targeting those that don't seem to be interested in further...
What do other districts do?
I know that Mr. Farkas, uh, had, uh, had the test, as a matter of fact, one, not that this is any, any tie with the military, but the military will offer the ASVAT test, and that would be an assessment of, of goals and interests.
I'm not sure if that's what I'm looking for, and if there's something that we have to, what I'm trying to say is, I believe we, we could identify by sophomore year if a student is in a college direction by the classes they're taking. We could do, we could do that through their guidance councils, by their schedules, if they're not taking college places freshman sophomore year, I'm going to guess that they're not going to college, because I don't know how you could do it in two years. So if we have them identified, there has to be a way to identify these kids, because we need to be able to focus on trying to, uh, give them some assistance, and we have too many kids graduating high school, uh, going nowhere.
I don't know if you could actually do that, I mean, why couldn't you just offer it to everyone? I mean, why would you have to target anyone? Just, just make it, you know, something that the guidance counselors discuss with students who come in on a regular basis, because everybody sits down with their guidance counselor, and make it something that the guidance department can just initiate, and this way it gets through a hundred percent revenue, and you don't talk to them, it's a pull-out program, saying to a kid, "Oh, I don't think you're going to make," you know, that's kind of a...
We also could, we also could, during, not only do we have orientations for each grade, uh, beginning of the school year, but during the course of the year, uh, there are, there are, we call them assemblies, but they're just, not that there's a program, but the guidance counselors bring in, say, all of the sophomores or all of the juniors to just review things, and in that setting, that test could be administered.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not trying to be down on any of that, but it's not working. We're, we're not identifying our non-college ground students, and we are not doing any to help them, and, and I want to start to push to do something for the non-college...
Again, I would ask you to do the same thing as Mr. Shaw did before, sit down with the principal and the superintendent, and see if you can come up with a plan.
Okay, just wanted to make it aware to all the board members.
I think many of the issues that were raised today in New Jersey, definitely, uh, this, uh, concern, if you want, I think they're all really focusing on the high school, and what I would plan to do is at the next meeting, have the principal, the vice-principal, the director of guidance, attend our conference meeting, and make a presentation, and then answer questions.
New business?
No, that's what, that's what, should bring me forth.
Yes, Mr. President, our new business, our...
Yes.
...is not to interrupt. There's an initiative being proposed by the townships and municipal alliance that would actually be geared towards administering a student health survey, or a needs assessment if you will, throughout the district, and it would be targeting the high school as well as the middle school. Some of the outcomes that we would like to assess with the student health survey would be drugs, alcohol, tobacco use, anxiety, depression, so we've got mental health variables that we would like to examine, bullying, physical activity, dietary habits, as well as time spent on Facebook, video games, and so forth. I've met with the Saks as part of my involvement with the municipal alliance, they're completely on board, Lisa Cassily and Joe Capello, and I can see how this is tied into your initiative, uh, Mr. President, regarding your health and wellness, subcommittee that you assigned, wellness, subcommittee that you assigned, trustees, Rogers, and Russo too. So I think it would be great, and again, on the cover of this article that came out in Sunday's Herald News on the front page, heroin use, access to suburban kids, a growing threat. So needless to say, with my involvement, working in a methadone clinic in New Jersey for five years, having kids that I grew up and played little with, coming through those corridors, I think it's a timely piece, and I think it turns, of us turning a blind eye to a lot of these issues, I would hope that I can seek illicit the support of my fellow trustees on this issue.
Excellent.
So we'll talk more about this at a later date.
I'd love to see you get together with, um, Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Russo, and then I'll put a plan, move that forward. Any more on old business, new business?
Mr. Rogers, new business? Good news. I've asked this also to Mrs. Zara, we had two Washington school students who actually won second place in a statewide chess tournament. So if we can invite that to Mrs. Zara, and her parents, who, at our next meeting, would be there, and recognize them, that would be terrific. Also, I received this email, congratulations to the Nutley Raider marching band for taking first place in the first competition of the season. That's excellent. We got one of the greatest marching bands in the country, let alone the state. Congratulations to them. Mrs. Zara talked about the taxpayer tour, but Mrs. Zara, how about the green, green fest tour that we got, so?
Also, with, with many of our initiatives, we are working through Mr. Madden, coordinator of science, who actually, we've all made a wonderful presentation on the curriculum. And we are ready for high school. It's a great day, seminar. And one day, he will talk to the high school students, either here or on the TPD as a nation, and then we will reach down to the inventory, and we will tie this into the junior ranger program. And it's, it's very timely, very timely.
Anyone else? I would, I would like to see, Mrs. Amens, if you could come up with an estimate for me to once and for all fix the greenhouse at the high school, the part of the science wing addition. I can't, I can't walk through that corridor anymore and see what I see in that greenhouse. I mean, we built it, and it's non-functional, and it's unacceptable. And we really need to get our hands around exactly what's wrong there with the ventilation system, and, and get an estimate to correct it, please. It's great, it's, it was a phenomenal idea and phenomenal facility for the first couple of weeks when it was built, and now it's a distorted bit. And that's not what that room is designed for. It should be educational space. So if you could please give us an estimate on that. You know, before we go into executive session, I just want to echo Mr. Russo's comments earlier with Mrs. Franciosi. Three of my kids went to Rackliff School. I think she was there, all three of them were still there, Erica and Melissa. And so I have along this route Mrs. Franciosi, and before that, Dr. Sarafino was principal, before her. And I've never met a person with more courage, more heart, and more love for this town and the school district. And, you know, we're going to miss you a lot, and we wish you the best in the future.
Thank you very much.
By my, sort of, I wish this room was standing room only. Mrs. Franciosi has been such an outstanding educator, a child advocate, tireless in her records on behalf of the Nutley School District and the community of Nutley. Her leaving is going to create a void. Just very quickly, social studies teacher, English teacher at the high school level, child study team member, elementary principal, and now assistant superintendent. It's been a wonderful balance of high school, my experience, and elementary, her experience. And when she leaves, an awful lot of institutional knowledge is with her. As a person, you can't find a finer person, a caring, enthusiastic, highly motivated professional who really has worked tirelessly and avoided the limelight, although sometimes the limelight does seek you. And she, she has avoided limelight, just worked tirelessly to make a difference in how this school district works, and certainly has been nothing but an asset and a supporter in my responsibilities, in my mission. And words really are not enough to tell you my admiration, my appreciation, and my respect for her as a person, as well as an educator. And there really is not anything that I can ever be adequate or say what I really feel. Suffice it to say, thank you, and good luck.